Good morning. My name is Stephen Naughton. I'm the hearings officer for the state of New Hampshire Insurance Department. I want to welcome you to today's hearing. Is on medical professional liability competitive or non-competitive market. It's our case number 233018. I want to welcome you to today's hearing being held pursuant to RSA 412:13 to determine whether or not to extend for another two years. The order issued on 11/8/21, which was case 2156AP, found that a non-competitive market exists in the medical professional liability insurance market for physicians, surgeons and hospitals. I look forward to receiving your information and opinions which will assist me in determining whether or not to extend the order. If I determine the market continues to be non-competitive, the order will remain in effect for two years. However, the order may be terminated after a new hearing if conditions in the market change. Okay. So the introduction of participants is Christian Cittarella, Chief Property and Casualty Actuary. And you, sir?
John Doyle, Vice President, Marketing and Administration at Medical Mutual Insurance Company of Maine.
Okay. Today we will hear first from Christian Cittarella, Chief Property and Casualty Actuary of the department supporting and finding that the medical professional liability insurance market is non-competitive and that the 11/8/21 order should be extended for another two years. We will follow Mr. Cittarella's testimony with testimony of anyone else who has signed up to speak and wishes to offer testimony either supporting the position or contesting it. Following that testimony, we will be prepared to receive any further comments from other audience members. Is there a sign up sheet?
Yes.
Okay. And if you'd like to present testimony or provide comments, I'd appreciate your signing up on that sheet if you haven't done so already. The primary reason for this public hearing is for the department to receive your input. The record and evidence from today's hearing will be fully considered in my review of market conditions surrounding medical professional liability insurance for physicians, surgeons and hospitals before we proceed to the ready questions. With that, I request that... Are you swearing? Am I swearing when?
Say again.
Who's swearing? Christian in? Me?
I know I can't swear myself in.
I know you can't swear either, but I'll swear in. Grace, right hand, please. Do you solemnly affirm that the evidence that you should give should be the truth, the whole truth, nothing but the truth?
I do.
Okay. Please state your name and current position with the department.
I'm Christian Cittarella, Chief Property and Casualty Actuary for the New Hampshire Insurance Department.
Okay, and begin your testimony.
So, good morning. This is the now 17th hearing relative to the question of competition in the physician surgeon and hospital medical professional liability insurance marketplace. At prior hearings, a presentation such as this covered several topics, including the applicable sections of RSA 412 dealing with competitive markets and the ramifications for insurers on the rate filing process if the commissioner or designee finds that an insurance market is non-competitive. Key attributes that a market should possess in order to conclude that it is competitive. Information on the medical professional liability insurance market in New Hampshire, including market share and concentrations among insurers, market financial performance and pricing of products. Suggested rationale to use in concluding that this particular market is not competitive within the context and constraints of RSA 412. At the last hearing held on January 22, 2021, I presented updated information about the physician surgeon and hospital market and offered my perspective that there was little information in the updated data to suggest a different conclusion. Following that hearing and after considering my comments, Commissioner Nekolopoulos concluded that a competitive market for physician surgeon and hospital medical professional liability does not exist in New Hampshire and issued order IAS 21056AP, meaning that prior approval rate filing procedures and standards as outlined in RSA 41216 would apply for a two-year period starting November 8, 2021. Because that ruling expires on November 7, 2023, it is time to make a new determination as to whether this market lacks a reasonable degree of competition. If you conclude that a competitive market for physician surgeon and hospital medical professional liability now exists in New Hampshire, then the applicable rates and rating rules will be filed on a use and file basis, as is any other commercial insurance other than workers' comp. Most importantly, in accordance with RSA 4121A, the department would not be able to disapprove a rate filing for being excessive. My comments today will focus on, one, updating the information presented at prior hearings with more recent statistics, and two, determining any changes in the New Hampshire MPL market that may have occurred which might cause you to now reach a different conclusion. So first off, we had the question, how has the marketplace changed with regard to regulated insurers and their portion of the written market? So if we look at our exhibits, you can take a look at exhibit 1A, and I apologize for the size of the print. It was right on the edge. Let's see whether we went to two pages or not. Exhibit 1A shows a list of companies and their direct written premium amounts for medical professional liability insurance in calendar years 2021 and 2022. Overall, the size of the market increased by 8.2% from $54.5 million to $59.0 million from 2021 to 2022. This increase was split just about evenly between the admitted market, which had a 9.4% increase in written premium, and the non-admitted market, which increased by about 7.2%. However, there appears to have been a shift within that non-admitted market from surplus lines to the risk retention groups. Also significant is that over the last two years, the portion of the market written by regulated carriers, that's the admitted market, those regulated carriers, their portion of the market fell below 50%. And this is despite that slight increase from 2021 to 2022. The regulated entities had never written such a small portion of the medical professional liabilities market in New Hampshire prior to 2021. Proselect continues as the lead writer of medical professional liability insurance in New Hampshire with 20.7% of the total market for 2022. It is important to note that Proselect wrote about 81% more premium than the next largest writer, and that would be TDC Specialty Insurance Company, and that's a surplus lines writer, and they had 11.5% of the market. And this is the first time that I can recall a non-admitted carrier having that second position. That position had been held by Medical Mutual Insurance Company of Maine, which has seen a dramatic decrease in written premium since 2020. They've dropped 43% of their written premium. And I think John might be able to share a little more insight if he chooses later on. On the rise among regulated carriers is ProAssurance Indemnity Company with almost 4%, 3.9% of the market. This is enough for third place among admitted carriers. There is another ProAssurance company with greater market share, but it operates as a surplus writer. And I'm not sure how common that is in the industry, but to have two companies writing so much of the business, one as a surplus writer and one as an admitted carrier. The Medical Protective Company is the fourth largest admitted writer in the market and the only other such carrier among the top 10 overall writers. MedPro continues to see a drop off in premium in New Hampshire, falling to 2.8% of the market, less than half of what it had in 2018. MedPro came on kind of as gangbusters about, what, five, six years ago, six years ago, some of that? And they're an Indiana company, and I guess, I don't know, their taste in New Hampshire has waned a bit. I don't know. They seem to be dropping off. So combined 2022 market share for the top 10 companies overall, whether admitted or not admitted, is 68.1%. So it's almost 70% of the market is concentrated in those top 10 companies. Of those, the four regulated carriers among them wrote more than a third of all New Hampshire business. There remains a substantial concentration of premium among the limited number of carriers. The U.S. Justice Department uses the Hefendel-Hirschman Index, also known as HHI, to describe market concentration, and that's not just in insurance, that's across all different sectors of the economy. An index over 2,500 indicates a highly concentrated market, an index between 1,500 and 2,500 indicates moderate concentration, and an index below 1,500 indicates a non-concentrated market. The HHI for 2022 in New Hampshire for medical professional liability is 786. And for perspective, no other major line of business in New Hampshire has an HHI greater than 470, and that would be personal auto. And it may not seem that high, 786. However, if we consider just those companies that are in the regulated market, so just those admitted carriers, the HHI jumps to over 2,707. And this indicates the admitted market is highly concentrated. If we move to exhibit 1B, we focus on those admitted carriers. This shows more information about the largest regulated insurers writing medical professional liability in New Hampshire. Specifically, I've indicated whether the companies are regional or national in scope and have shown the total amount of medical professional liability insurance each of them wrote in New Hampshire as it relates to the total New Hampshire premium. And that's in line, that would be column 1, 2, 3, 4, 5, right? And then we also show medical professional liability premium and total premium written countrywide. So please note that with the exception of Proselect and Medical Mutual of Maine, medical professional liability insurance writing in New Hampshire is quite insignificant for most carriers. And that's kind of what I'm aiming at here, is that there's no indication that carriers are going to meet a need or kind of adapt or adjust quickly to changes in the New Hampshire market because it's a very, very small piece of their business. Except, you know, for those two regional writers. So next exhibit shows companies that have entered or exited the market since 2018. For the purpose of this exhibit, companies whose written premium has been dramatically reduced from 2018 levels, I take that at 80% or more, if they've dropped 80% of their business, we've included in the category of insurers who have left the New Hampshire MPL market. Of note here is the arrival of Physician Insurance RRG, which, you know, technically re-entered the state in 2022 and is already at 2.4% of the New Hampshire market. And that's a company out of Washington State. It's a Seattle-based RRG that is, what did you say, Littleton Hospital, is that what you said? So John had mentioned earlier today that they had acquired or brought into their captive Littleton Hospital and covers their liability there. And this is something we've seen over the years, that hospital groups, independent physicians will join a hospital group, and then that hospital group will join a captive or an RRG. Among those carriers who have left the state since 2018 is Endurance America Specialty Insurance, and that company at one point had over about 7.5% of the market, and so that was several years ago. So the next question we talk about or we try to answer is that, has there been any change in rate filing activity among the leading writers? And so the next two exhibits kind of try to tackle that. And in the past, I had only included three companies here, but because of the emergence of ProAssurance, I've included them on the list as well, and so there are four companies there. Those are those four admitted carriers within the top 10 writers. So, back to my script. Exhibit 2A is a comparison chart which shows current pricing for selected classifications of physicians among the four largest regulated insurers expected to write the premium in 2024. There is, you'll see, variance among insurers as to the pricing of this product. Medical Protective appears to have lower rates for more risky classes relative to the other insurers and slightly higher rates than competitors for some less risky codes. You'll notice that, I mean, in your experience in the insurance business in general and medical malpractice specifically, that their base rates don't always tell the outcome for the premium itself, so I've also included adjustments that each of the companies has in their rules relative to, among other things, claims activity. But also if they have like a risk officer on site, then they're going to get a discount. If they manage, you know, they do training, they're going to get discounts, things like that. And so it doesn't necessarily say what their final premium is going to be, just their base rates. If you look at the next exhibit, exhibit 2B shows a rate history over a 15-year period. And I did go, I keep thinking every year I'm going to knock off some of those early years because it doesn't need to be such a long chart, but I think it is important to kind of see where we were back in the, you know, 2009, 2010, 2011, where rate filings were coming in quite frequently. And so I keep that on this chart. Sort of where we were at the last hard cycle, the last, you know, hardening of the market in that phase of the insurance cycle. The pace of rate change actively slowed for several years, you know, after, say, 2013 or so. But it appears to be picking up again slowly. And, you know, led by Proselect, Proselect went and took a second 5% increase in four years, and they did that just two years ago. Most rate revisions have been across-the-board changes and not focused on specific classes or categories of risk. Most of the time, it's a base rate change. In addition to their own data, many companies rely on each other's filings to justify their filed loss costs. Non-New Hampshire data is used to supplement New Hampshire experience in each of the rate filings for such things as trend, loss and loss development. Also increased limit factors and classification relativities. This is an appropriate actuarial approach and methodologies, and even though this is appropriate practice from an actuarial ratemaking perspective, it does further support the need to ensure that the data and methodology that market leaders are using is appropriately reviewed by the regulator. And so that's kind of a, you know, a reason why it's important to have some strict regulations on the admitted market, especially those leaders, because the other companies do rely on them for data and guidance of ratemaking. So moving on to kind of that last question that I considered when thinking about this hearing. How has the experience changed since the last hearing? So that's where we look at exhibit 3. Exhibit, the next three exhibits are charts that show financial performance for the past, and now we're up to 33 years of data, that ending in 2022. And this data comes from the National Association of Insurance Commissioners. So that first chart, exhibit 3A, shows New Hampshire's experience in 2022 and an estimated aggregate combined ratio over those years. So in 2022, the estimated combined ratio for all writers, that's admitted and not admitted in New Hampshire, was 128%. Which indicates that the overall market experienced an underwriting loss. There's, that's quite a high number, even for liability lines of business. The 2022 pure loss ratio in New Hampshire was 77%, and that does not include LAE, that's just loss, which is materially higher than average. Loss adjustment expense at 27% of earned premium and other expenses at 23% in the year 2022 are consistent with recent years. So those numbers, quote unquote, are somewhat normal or to be expected. It's that 77% pure loss which is higher. As is the case with all liability lines of business, medical professional liability loss ratios can be quite volatile. Just look at that chart. That is not uncommon. And nevertheless, these do numbers, these numbers do support the observed rate increases we have seen recently and may indicate additional rate adjustments in the near future. All right, so, all right, let's, exhibit 3B shows countrywide direct underwriting results. The medical professional liability line countrywide seems to be moving towards unprofitability from an underwriting perspective as well. It actually seems to have flattened out since maybe 2019 or so, although it's hard to tell. We do not have 2022 countrywide expense data yet from the NAIC on a countrywide basis. So I've made a projection from the information that is available. We do have losses, we do have LAE, it's the commission and brokerage, it's taxes, fees, assessments, those sorts of things, that those numbers are not quite in yet. With a 2022 estimated aggregate combined ratio of just under 107%, the countrywide market appears to be leveling off on the hard side of the market cycle. On a countrywide basis, the results are obviously much less volatile than in a small state like New Hampshire. The projected 2022 loss ratio was, countrywide, was 53.7%, which is down slightly from recent prior years. And so in that regard, and that may make up that difference where on a countrywide basis, yes, technically it's unprofitable, but 107% is it's not quite, I would consider, like, hair on fire for a commercial lines liability. And that could be, that is that difference, is that pure loss ratio, as I mentioned, where the 77% in New Hampshire is significantly different. It is important to remember that investment income is not considered when making this assessment of profitability. For long-tail lines like medical professional liability, this can provide a margin for overall profitability despite a triple-digit combined ratio. If we go to exhibit 3C. This chart shows New Hampshire along with two other states in the region, and these are the neighboring states of Maine and Vermont, which are comparable both in geography but also in size, population-wise. It shows that even though the results for an individual state can be quite volatile, over the long term, they broadly follow the same cycle as exhibited in the countrywide results. And these are averaged over five years. These are the five-year moving average for direct underwriting results, so that's that's combined ratio averaged over five years. And you can kind of make out the insurance cycle right there. Where in, where were we? You know, back in 2000, in the early aughts, there was definitely a hard cycle, a hard market, and then it leveled off, came back up again in the early 20s, and started coming back up in the early 20 teens. It shows that it's important, it is, we can't ignore the fact that Vermont appears to, oh, sorry, Maine appears to be handling this market and these market conditions much better than either Vermont or New Hampshire. You know, Vermont seems to be going in a slightly different direction, although I think we'll see kind of why their 2022 number is a bit of a blip when we get to the, you know, the next exhibit, or maybe two exhibits down. They had some really bad results from one or two of their companies. Exhibit 3D, just as a big, long list of numbers. This is New Hampshire-specific, and these are the underwriting results for New Hampshire over the last 33 years. So this is what you saw in that first chart, just as numbers. And you can see more of the detail, the ebbs and flows of the loss experience over time. And so if you look at that, it would be the third column, the loss ratio, you can see how that number kind of really jumps all over the place. And that's not unexpected. It's a very small market, medical malpractice, and any liability line of business is going to, as they say, it's high severity, low frequency. And so when claims pop, they tend to pop pretty badly, and you're going to get some big numbers, when in other years, you know, you might see like a 30% loss ratio. And as you'll see on, I think it's the next exhibit, that some of these numbers at any given year can be quite unexpected. So if we move to exhibit 4. Exhibit 4 shows the 2022 direct loss ratios for the leading writers in New Hampshire, Maine and Vermont. We can see quite clearly here the significant volatility within this line of business. Also, the volatility within a company across different states is also quite noticeable. And the experience of Medical Mutual of Maine in each state has been particularly dramatic, as an example. And just to, I mean, I don't, this is not a matter of picking on, this is an example. I mean, you could look at others, other companies within the state, or if we included Massachusetts, we'd get a whole nother set of numbers. But Medical Mutual Insurance of Maine in New Hampshire ended up with a negative loss ratio. And that can occur, and that does occur, when there's adjustments within reserves. And if the adjustments within reserves, that's considered, it's considered a negative loss, right? So because you're bringing down reserves, and if you overall bring down reserves more than you've paid out claims, you're going to have a negative incurred loss on the books. And that's generally favorable in the overall scheme for the insurance company. But then if you look in Maine, it's behaving kind of normally, like one would say, normally a loss ratio, although higher than kind of expected, still within a reasonable range. But then if you look in Vermont, they ended up with a loss ratio of well, what is that, 260%? Where, you know, their losses exceeded what the reserves had indicated. You know, or in that case, there were some new claims that increased reserves dramatically. But if you look down that list, in that fourth column, 1, 2, 3, 4, 5, fifth column, you'll see those numbers are quite volatile. So countrywide medical professional liability insurance trends have an important influence on the New Hampshire market. For perspective on the countrywide market, I have reviewed publications from industry and the NAIC. Two years ago, I believe it was the same room, I stated that COVID-19 would likely have a significant effect on the medical professional liability market. However, at that time, I had no data to support that assertion or provide any guidance of what the significant effects might be. It was pure speculation. Now, the general consensus is that the net effects of the pandemic have been pretty inconsequential to the MPL market, countrywide. You know, during the pandemic itself, there was a drop off in doctors' visits in offices, generally, you know, because people weren't going anywhere. They weren't going to go to a normal appointment, and in fact, many offices told people to stay home. Don't come in for your annual physical, we'll take care of it after the pandemic. But on the flip side, there has not been a significant number of claims related to, you know, COVID treatment. We're not seeing, like, there was an anticipation of claims coming out of, you know, on the medical professional liability side of things as to dealing with the treatment of COVID. But that generally hasn't been the case. It is true, the countrywide market is hardening with increased premium in most states and a tightening of underwriting decisions. That latter piece can explain the shift, or can partly explain the shift in New Hampshire market to the surplus lines carriers. However, as seen in our state, the rate increases are not as dramatic as we saw in as we saw in prior hard markets. Insurers appear to be revising reserve estimates and otherwise riding out this period of uncertainty. One legacy of the pandemic is a continued use of telemedicine. It is still early to understand the effect of wide application of telemedicine on the MPL claims activity. Relative to other states, the MPL market in New Hampshire ranks in the middle with respect to estimated aggregate combined ratio, incurred loss, and insurer expenses. Generally speaking, there are some states where there's been, where it's been more, it's been quieter with fewer premium increases and a better general combined ratio. But then there are many, many other states where there's been significant rate and frequent rate increases and worse underwriting results. So the conclusion I draw from all of this is there has not been a significant change to the market in the two years since the last hearing in any of the three categories led to the prior declaration of a non-competitive market. It is my opinion that requiring companies to submit rate filings under a prior approval basis has not affected any company's ability to implement actuarially justified changes in their level, in the levels they wanted and when they wanted them. The continued migration of premium from the regulated market to surplus lines reduces the ability of regulators to monitor rate activity. Also, the regulated market continues to be dominated by a handful of companies, which hinders a competitive environment. There is clear evidence of a hardening market at the state and national level. The depth and length of the hard market is difficult to predict and may yet be influenced by COVID or other large-scale events not yet known. With all this in mind, it seems reasonable to conclude again that the medical professional insurance market in New Hampshire has several attributes associated with a non-competitive market. Thank you.
Okay. Technically, you want to admit your exhibits?
Sure.
You just moved to admit them?
I moved to admit the exhibits I gave you. And I can certainly provide electronic versions if you need them.
No, I don't need them. So we're going to admit Exhibit 1A, 1B, 1C, 2A, 2B, 3A, 3B, 3C, 3D, and 4.
Yes.
Okay. And your testimony, you moved to admit your testimony?
I would, I'm willing to submit my testimony.
Okay, so admitted. Okay, is there anyone else that wants to say anything? Okay, then we'll hold the meeting open for seven days to see if anyone else wants to file a response.